I'm Tien Neng. I'm here to support Tien Neng's campaign.
First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. 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 First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. 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 First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner.
First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner.
First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner. First of all, I'm here to support the county commissioner.
Tien Neng is running for Ramsey County Commissioner. So we're here to support his candidacy for the county commissioner. So I'm gonna have a couple of guest speakers come and talk about Tien Neng and why he's the best candidate for this position. So we're just gonna get right to the program and get us kicking on right off the ground for his campaign kickoff tonight. First of all, thank you very much for coming, okay? So the first guest speaker we're gonna have here tonight to talk about is Va Huavu. He's the former president of the eighteen council. He's gonna come talk a little bit about Tien Neng and why he's the best candidate for the position. So ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome Va Huavu.
Okay, you know, you're very good. You're very good. You're very good. You're very good. You know, you're very good. You're very good. You're very good. Okay, I think you're very good. You're very good. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here, Brother Tien Neng. My name is Va Huavu. I'm the former president of the nineteen council two years ago. I'm here because I want to show my support to Tien Neng for Ramsey County Commissioners District Seven. Since our collaborative journey to this great land of opportunity more than forty years ago, we have come a long way while there's still more work to do and more progress to be made. It is time for us to help write and shape the public policies at all levels of city, county, state, and perhaps the federal level. Tien Neng is an energetic man who always has the courage, passion, and commitment to serve his community. His personal to professional actions has always been consistent since I met him back in the mid-nineties. I have known Tien Neng for over twenty years. We have crossed paths many times in our social and professional lives. I have seen him develop his leadership foundation from many years through his community engagement. He has compassion for our community from the young to the old. He also has mentored children from at-risk communities and kept them safe and inspired them to focus on their academics. I have also seen his connections with the elders in our community. For example, he recently came to our senior services place at Volunteers of America and volunteers his time to teach the seniors there how to make crafts, which brought that a lot of joy. Thank you, Tien Neng, for that. Through my experience with him, I value and trust his judgment. With his determination, his passions, and commitment to serve the community he loves and deeply cares from his heart, I believe his role as Ramsey County Commissioner and efforts will benefit his constituents in District Seven greatly. As a community leader, community advocate, and concerned citizens, I share Tien Neng's goal and objective to improve service accessibility and equitability for his constituents in District Seven and the people in Ramsey County. In closing, I'm confident in him because he has the experience, the passions, and commitment that has proven his leadership in our community. If you share my judgment, please pledge your support and work hard to get Tien Neng elected for Ramsey County Commissioner District Seven. You're very good. 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 But you know, you're you're very good. 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 You're very good.
Okay, I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. Thank you very much for coming down tonight to support Tien Neng and also for his generous contribution. He said it's something so important. Tonight, there's nothing more important. I know that there's a coronavirus going on and nobody wants to be here. But you know what? All of you guys are here. So that means you guys are so important that nothing is safer here than anybody else. So here is a safe place where all of yous can be. So thank you very much for coming tonight. So we're gonna have the next two guest speakers gonna come here and gonna, again, talk a little bit about... I wanna bring up Nikki Villa Sensencio. Okay, I don't know if I said that right, but close enough. And I'm gonna have Darryl Paulson to come up here and to talk about... Nikki's gonna talk about... She's the head and park recreation commissioner of Maplewood here. So she's gonna talk about human services and with regard to the county services that our constituents access these type of services. So she's gonna talk about that. And then, Darryl Paulson's gonna... He's the current actually, community and business advisory committee for the Gold Line. And he's gonna talk about how they outreach to those who actually use the Gold Line here. And also, he's also vice chair for the tech or transportation accessibility advisory for the Met Council. So I'm gonna give the floor to these two. And they're gonna talk about why it's so important for Tien Neng to be part of this, why Tien Neng's gonna run...
Ramsey County are accountable to our environment and to our people. So that's the first thing I wanna say. The second thing I wanna say is... So a lot of the work that I do is as a disability rights activist and citizen lobbyist. My husband, Darryl, here, and my daughter, Ally, here, we do a lot of stuff at the state capitol around services for families. So we drafted legislation that supports all families because we believe that everybody lives in a family or wants to live in a family. And sometimes that family looks different. And we feel that our county services, so our social services that are put through the county, our Ramsey County here, should be equitable for all families. And right now, they're not. So if you go to Ramsey County and you ask for services, they look at you first as an individual and then next as the next individual, and then maybe your child. And we feel that when you go to Ramsey County to ask for services, they should look more at you as a family because it's a family unit and the family is stronger together when we provide for that family together. And so I really hope to work with Mr. Wang on those issues. And another very passionate issue that my family and I work on is transportation. You know, we have some great, you know, bus rapid transit lines coming into Maplewood and all throughout Ramsey County, the Rush Line and the Gold Line. So my husband, Darryl, is gonna tell you a little bit about that. He sits on the Gold Line Committee.
So one of the things that I wanna say before I get started is I wanna thank, I wanna thank T. Wang for inviting us and allowing us to be part of his family. Because that's the one thing, as Nikki said earlier, we all wanna be part of some family or our family. And families look differently. And the reason, the reason why we came tonight was because we believe that this is our family. This is our family. And if you claim us or not, we're gonna work, we're gonna work together. We're gonna work for you. And Mr. Wang here has a vision, he has a clear vision, that includes families and transportation. For me particularly, I have served in public policy as a citizen advisor probably most of my adult life for the better part of twenty-six years. I've been involved in some form of transportation, public transportation, nearly eighteen and a half years. So I know this system that we're about to put in here, the Bus Rapid Transit or the BRT, similar to like the A-line or the C-line, room where the decisions are being made. And the fact that the folks that he brings in this room are not being represented in the community when you talk about shifting dollars around at the county level, that saddens me because we are represented in just about every other facet. We're represented by our families at our schools. We're represented in our neighborhoods, at our local supermarkets. We're represented in our parks when we use our local parks. But why are we represented in local government? I don't know. And it's about damn time we get represented that way. And that's why I'm here to support T. Wang for county commissioner.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanna take a moment to apologize that we have so many speakers or so many... I left Mai out. Mai is the speaker here. She's here. So I wanted her, bring her here and speak. So I'm sorry about that. I just kinda overlooked the speaker here. So I wanna have Mai. Mai, can you please come here? And the floor is all yours.
My name is Mai. And I am very honored to be here tonight to have been asked by my good friend, Tien Neng, to say a few words. Needless to say, I was very surprised when I learned out he was running for county commissioner. But it doesn't surprise me because Tien Neng is always serving and giving back to the community. And he's a natural leader, so I know he's gonna do a great job. So before I go into what I said I would talk about tonight, which is accessibility, I wanted to just talk a little bit about how I know Tien Neng. It's been a few years that we've known each other, and I don't know exactly how long. But Tien Neng is one of the few people in the Hmong community who will center disability issues in a meaningful and intentional way, which I really appreciate because it's something that I've been working on for a long, long time. And it's a challenge because, being from Hmong, we don't know anything about disability, right? We never talk about it. It's a taboo subject. And so I appreciate Tien Neng, you know, working with me over the years and partnering with me. We've been at the Hmong Village and did an accessibility tour out there. We went out to Komo to do another accessibility evaluation for J4. And, you know, he's really been such a great support for me for raising that disability issue in the Hmong community. So I wanna thank you for that. And I'm looking forward to working with you some more on your campaign and in other areas as well. So that's how we know each other, you know, help change systems and to help bring about equitable changes for our community. And so I'm, you know, super excited for him and I wanna support him. And I hope all of you do, all of you do too. So, yeah, thank you again for inviting me tonight. And best of luck.
You're very good. 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 You're very disappointed. You're very good. 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 You're VP. You're very good. 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 They're supposed to come over here and support you. You're very good.
To really not just move community, but those who touch, those he comes into contact with. And I also know that he's a wonderful, wonderful father to his family, to his four children. So what I'll do, I just wanna bring Tien Neng up here for the next county commissioner to be up here to talk about issues that will really improve and impact and move our community in District Seven forward. So let's have Tien Neng up here, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Brother Jai, for your inspiring words. Hopefully, I could live up to that and I can recall the memory of how we battled in soccer field. So anyway, thank you, everybody. I know with all the challenges we face with coronavirus going around and with all the activity going on in the community, the weather being nice. And obviously, Thursday night, I thank you all for coming tonight, okay? I will speak interchangeably between Hmong and English because I know a lot of my relatives and family are here and I know we have a lot of colleagues that are here also. So we'd like to make sure that everybody leave tonight by having heard the message that we are trying to pass on. So again, thank you. Before I go any further, I'd like to just give a brief moment to acknowledge the people that are making it possible for me to be standing here in front of you all tonight. So with that, I'd like to thank my wife and my four kids. Is the firstborn here yet or no? Okay. So I think it's probably do me more justice for me to have you all up here, standing with me rather than just by myself. So could you all come up here? Can you bring a bar too? Bring a bar and a latte? I often go to places and people ask me, "Are you sure you marry?" Because I always tell people, "Yes, I marry, have four kids." It's not really common in our community to marry late like I did. But I was one of the individual that decided to wait and marry very late in my life. So that's why a lot of people do not believe me, mainly because my wife is busy and at home with my four kids and with her job. So she really have time to go out with me. So oftentimes, I venture out by myself and when people see me, they say, "Are you sure you married?" Because we don't see you with a wife at all. So anyway, is I here today or no? Okay, today, you would share, come up here. So I know I have a lot of family in the audience, but these are the ones I say from my father, Pleetong Va. So my love is my wife, Ong Xiong. For the Hmong relatives, it's Gom Ong Xiong Sen Yama Rina Ke Ka. People often wonder why I was in Kamke and then I got married in Laos, in Laos. I've been old, they thought that I married in Laos, but actually, I married here in St. Paul. So my wife here, and then my mom here. In Hmong, we say Niang Pleetong. Well, her maiden name is Li. So her name is Juoli. And then my firstborn, Yi. My middle daughter, Daye. My son, Ti, and my baby, Chiya. And over here, my older brother, Tsisa. So it's fortunate that my father have three of us sons, but our younger brother lives in the Selikong Valley in California. So Tsisa and I are here with our older sister and her kids are here too. Can you guys stand too, please? My nephews, nieces, and grandnieces. Okay, so they are here. And my other sister lives, my two sister and my younger brother lives in California. So thank you all for coming. So you guys can go ahead and sit down. So I'm gonna be talking a little long. So I don't want everybody... So I'm gonna be talking a little long, so I don't want everybody to wait. So again, without you guys giving me the thumbs up, we don't, I don't think we're gonna have tonight or any other night. So I thank you so much, you guys, and make sure you thank the other member too. So thank you so much. If you guys could stand, which I probably won't be able to do, you can stand there. But if you're not, feel free to go back and take a seat. Thank you. So can we give a round of applause to the community member, please? All right. And then the other that are not able to be here, the advisor, one is here that I had consult for a long time before I made this decision, a final decision to run for Ramsey County Commissioner in District Seven. One of the first ones I saw, his wisdom is Professor Li Ba Xiong, Tong Ba Xiong from Concordia, Center for Monge Study at Concordia. Chris Xiong, and then Li Juva, Ya Long is here. And then Gu Ya, who's not here, so give them a round of applause. So thank you for the advisor. All right. So, again, with all these, thank you. Now I also, it's a tradition in Mau to also recognize those that are still in office. And I want to give a shout out to the district, both senate and house of District Thirty-eight, District Forty-three, District Fifty-three, and District Sixty-seven with the council member of St. Paul, War Six, specifically increasing two. All these are included in the district commissioner, Ramsey County Commissioner, District Seven. So I just want to acknowledge those that are in office and have been serving us, the people of Ramsey County for this long. So without them, I don't think we would have this opportunity. So thank you to all those, both senators and representative and city council for having, representing our people this far. So I guess, I thought we're gonna shift a little bit, but we have, you know, that's a good crowd, right? With, again, with everything going on. So appreciate everybody being here. So let's just share a little idea of why we're here tonight and why you, you know, take up your time and be with us tonight. But as we always say in Mau, I think one of the things that's famous about Mau people is not so much the writing piece, but the storytelling, right? So tonight, I will do that fashion of telling a story. So bear with me, okay? It's gonna take a little longer than usual, all right? Many other good ideas. I mean, we Monge people, we have many good ideas and we talk a lot about what's good about Mau. But again, one of the very best thing about Monge people is telling story, oral story. So here's my story that I want to share with you all tonight and why, so we could come to know who I am, what I stand for, and why I'm running for Ramsey County Commissioner, District Seven. As we all know, most of us were not immigrant, we were refugees. And many of us know that Mau Americans are refugees from Laos. We were from, we were, I mean, we were from Laos, but we came to the US through the refugee camp in Thailand. So as refugee or any newcomer, one of the first things that you experience is county services. So as Professor Tong Ba or Li Ba wants share with me, he said, "We go through stages, you know, as human being, you know, as we grow. We grow whether you, you know, being at home or being dependent to governmental services. We go through this phase or this stage where we depend on our services, our people to help us. And then we sustain certain level of wealth or income and we're able to sustain our life for ourselves. But then in return, what do we need to do with that sustainability? One of the ways, we need to give back. And this is the reason why the driving force behind the decision to be part of this election two thousand twenty and the race of county, Ramsey County Commissioner in District Seven is simply to give back. It's not so much that I have made it or that I have so much to give, but it's more so that I have the experience because I myself, my family, my community that I live in have experienced through all these process. So it is without a doubt, I think I have the personal experience and the drive to give the best practice and service delivery to Ramsey County and its people. I'm thinking back how some other will view me because I have always been around and acted in the community, but recently, in Senator Wong He's office, his, one of his legislation, legislature aide resigned. He happened to be a relative, I call him Yi Lo, Victor Wong Lee. He resigned from the position, so Senator got a relative in Kansas City to come and work as his aide. So everywhere that his aide went, she always sees me. So one day she stopped me, she said, "Today, why are you all over?" You know, so every meeting we sent it from was there, she was there and I was there too. So she asked me. So anything from elderly, veterans, cultural, language preservation initiative, for example, like the China Garden, a failing lake, the athletic recreational events that we installed, like the Dulu Court, the Kato Court in Ramsey County Park and in St. Paul Park in Rag, and other, you know, development activity around the city or in the Twin Cities. She see me, that's why she inquire. So yes, I've been all over. It's not because, sometimes it's not because I want to, but sometimes it's because the issues drove me to be part of it or invite me to be part of it. For example, we have issues like DNR, hunting, hunting with dispute with DNR rangers. Most people were just rushing aside and say, "You know, you should not just, you should not go hunting." Then that goes the issues. But I took a different stand. No, that's your recreational choice. You have the choice to participate in any recreational, whether being outdoors, being sports, I mean, in organized sports or things like hunting. So when we have incident like, you know, dispute with ranger in, you know, hunting, doing hunting, I took up those issues and helped support the individual that have issues. Well, another thing, the poisoning of mushroom, how many of you guys remember? Ten Monge kids collect mushroom at Keller Park, a ten-year-old ended up, lost her life. Nobody did anything, but, you know, I took that up, brought Department of Health, came and talked, educated community, printed posters, sharing to the community what poison, how to identify poisonous mushroom. Those of you that are older, my age or older, you remember how do we determine poisonous or edible product or vegetable in the wild? We look to the wild for signal, right? So if no, nothing is eating or nothing land on things like mushroom, we just don't eat it. But did our American, Monge American kids knew about it? No. So Department of Health was able to, you know, print brochures, posters telling that not only the color, not only whether, you know, the wild, any sign of wild telling you that is edible, you literally pluck the mushroom out so you could tell, the roots will tell you whether it's poisonous or not. So things like that, that I've been part of it. Grave desiccation in Thailand, our marked children's grave site at Fort Swan, law enforcement raid at our two famous shop, Monge Town Marketplace, Monge Village. I remember all the law enforcement, call Department of Health, ADA, full administration, all those came and we just simply condemned Monge Village and Monge Town saying, you know, those people that do business at Monge Village and Monge Town deserve to be punished. You know, I see differently. I called the DA, Department of Health and all the law enforcement, we got together and we were able to, you know, dismiss all the charges and get all the cashes back to all the vendors at the Monge Town Marketplace. So little things like that, I mean, that's why, you know, a lot of us that we live here for a long time, we took everything for granted. We don't remember who's due, what who do and goes where. But Ba Nia, Elizabeth He, Senator's new aide, was the one that kind of helped me, you know, remember, "Oh, okay, you're right. Maybe I'm all over, so maybe it's time for me to slow down." So I am slowing down since I heard her mentioning that. And with that, I thought, okay, for this later chapter of my life, I probably need to be a little more specific and more focused on what I need to do for my community that will be more impactful on the larger scale. So today, I thank you for being here and I am now officially with my family and my campaign team to officially declare March twelve, Thursday, March twelve, two thousand twenty as the official date for the campaign of Tsien Ling Va for Ramsey County Commissioner, District Seven. So we'll kick that off. And with that, we'll still need a lot of your support as we go forward. I have heard that because there are gonna be more than two candidate, there may be a primary for this election. So stay tuned. We may need your assistance, we may have a primary coming sometime in the summer or early fall. Mostly, most primary occur in August with the general election follow in November. But in declaring my candidacy, what do I know about politics? I have never been in any form of politic or any, served in any form of capacity. But I think I have been, you know, playing on the side and study on the side for long enough that I may know not enough to, you know, play the whole game, but sufficient enough to start. And that's why we declared this campaign today. I just want to quote Kent Martin, the Minnesota DFL Chair, and he also the Democratic, National Democratic Commission Vice Chair, which responsible for the all Democratic candidate in Minnesota and nationally. He once, at this very spot, came and supported the Van Yu and the Monge Asian Caucus and he quote the late Paul Willstone saying, "I and we are in politic to make people great." So I just want to let you know, we are here to make people great. And may I just add, people, simply, it's a too general, a general term, but I want to add, our people. Just like what Darryl you said earlier, right? We are family, we are included in this. So it's our people, it's not your people or my people or just people, but it's our people because we are in the same community. So I am glad that I'm here and I am proud to have my team with me and to be able to declare this campaign so we can push on forward in the hope that in November, we will become something and we will continue to serve the, our people of Ramsey County. And what does that mean? Also, one of the relatives asked me when that person heard of my candidacy or that I wanted to run for Ramsey County Commissioner. That person asked, "What are the things that you're gonna be doing if you are elected?" So as my, Darryl and Nikki talked about earlier, there's no magic wand here. We all need to go with the very, back to the very basics. Do we provide surveys that are accessible to our people? If we're not, we need to think about it. We evaluate ourselves and make sure that what we do are accessible and we, as elected official, are accessible to our people in the community. And how do we overcome that accessibility? Like my say earlier, my class say earlier, why haven't we thought about moving all the county services away from downtown? You know, as a refugee, having family and, you know, depending on county services, we know how depressing it is, we know how frustrating it is to access services that are in downtown. As a business person, I also operate a driving school. Most of my youth and adults, drivers, drivers' ed student, terrified just looking at the armed gate of a ramp, parking ramp, left along parallel parking or ninety-degree parking in downtown, right? So accessibility is very important, it's key. So I guess, I told that relative, "One of the things that I want to look right away when I elect, not if," she, that person said, "not if, but when, when you are elected." So when I'm elected, that's one of the things that I want to research and find out the best practice to see, how can we move all the county services away from downtown? I think we all live that area and the downtown has, I guess, been congested enough, busy enough for us to access the service. So one of the tasks that I want to do is, yes, find the best practice and solution to move all the services away from the downtown area and to put that back into the community that we live in so that could benefit the people that live in the community, could benefit the businesses that are in the community, okay? We have people that are here tonight that are working hard to support the people of Ramsey, but are Ramsey supporting them. So small business, landlord, mom's and pop shop, those are needing the support of Ramsey County. So in short, yes, that is one other alternative or one other solution that I look to. The other, is we always talk about homelessness, right? Just this past week, the state of Minnesota declared that investing in shelter, emergency shelter, appropriate so much money, five hundred million bonds, fifty million, fifteen million for improving the emergency infrastructure. But we know, time and time again, without combined governmental team working together, governmental work meaning state, county, and city, combine the resources working together to find best practice, best solution to resolve the homelessness issues, that would never happen regardless of how many, how much money we pour into. So again, let's go back to putting everything back to the community, supporting the people, supporting the business so they could thrive. We cannot just say landlord, have to ban, so, you know, you could offer affordable rental unit to tenant. And tenant, again, have our own responsibility. How do we become a better tenant? And how do we help landlord to watch over or to make sure that their property are equitable or are accessible? So those are the things that, again, with, regardless of how much money we have, if we don't find a way for government to work together, we would never improve things like homelessness in our community. So, again, to answer that individual inquiry, I answered that person back with one of the things that I thought would be more urgent to me, moving city services, I mean, county services away from the city, try to find combined governmental resources, business, organizational, faith-based, businesses, individual, combine the resource to help resolve, you know, urgent needs or resource like we have, whether being ADA related, being homelessnessers, we need all of us come together. And there's no way to combine that resource then to become something, somebody or something like a county commissioner. An individual like myself or like you, when you speak out, you share idea, you often, people will look the other way. But as county commissioner, I think I will, and I believe, I will be able to bring government at our level to come together and not to just provide resource, but to craft meaningful, sound solution with policy made, with funds appropriated so we could combat these services that we are so providing. One of the things that when I first moved to Maplewood twenty years ago, I remember receiving a package introducing and welcoming my family to Maplewood. But since then, I have not seen anything. Recently, I just attended a business, Eastside Business, hosted by the Paying and Arcade Business Association. I have to leave at the end because the discussion got a little heated. And the reason why the discussion got a little heated is because... And the reason why the discussion got a little heated is because the PAIN and Arcade Business Association hosted a meeting and mentioned about past networking opportunity, and some of the small businesses that are in attendance didn't realize there was such meeting without the even, uh, PAIN and Arcade Business Association. So things like that. It's not the PAIN Arcade Business fault, it's not the small business owner's fault, but, you know, we have need to find a way to come together and provide resource so everybody could reach out and welcome a newcomer, whether being a homeownership, a new business, to Ramsey County. And in order to do that, I remember another famous quote that I learned a long ago, and I'm sure many of you heard it many times. The so famous quote credited to as being African poem or proverb, it says, "It takes a village to raise a child," right? But we forgot. We always talked about, "It takes a village to raise a child," but where is the village? And having moved here as a Mong refugee, we first settled in Minneapolis, then we settled in Frog Town. The east side were, was a place that's faraway place, we could not imagine coming over the east side. Because it belongs to community like the German, the Polish, the Italian, right? But now, that community have changed. It has Mong, Korean, Somali, okay? People of all ethnic city, from coming from all over the world. So now, we need to create a village, we need to find a village. And what is a better place for the elected officials to come together and establish that village? So we could better serve the people in our village. So that is one of the things, that as county commissioner, I want to create an alliance of elected official that we're not only just providing resource, but we'll, again, craft solution and policy that has dollar attached to it that are meaningful. Every day, it aches my heart, especially working with our elder, the veterans. They go to politicians, and politician issue them a simple resolution, declaration. Those things, yes, sounds very good, but they carry no weight. They means, they means a lot in words. But basically, after the signature, it becomes simply a sitting piece of paper collecting dust. So what I'm saying is, we need policy that are made, that will carry, has dollar attached to it and has some laws, some legal, uh, implication attached to it. So that is what I'm calling for, the village to be made, to be created. So we could come together and propose and make changes. So I look forward to your support. And hopefully, in November, we will learn on something that Ramsey County in 2021 and beyond will have a different faces. And again, as Darryl Pausen alluded to earlier, that are representative of the people perhaps in this room. So I thank you for all of you for coming. And I know with Minnesota crazy weather, with the coronavirus looming, it's gonna be hard for us to get out and to be gathered in a collective group. So I invite and encourage all of you to stay tuned to our campaign. We will be reaching out to you, probably not in the traditional way where we gather in large group, but we will gather in small group, perhaps individual, over the phone, even over Facebook. I heard my uncle Dong Ya said earlier that, when you do events like this, don't rely on Facebook. Uncle, sorry, we may have to rely on Facebook because of, uh, the health issue, so. Please, stay tuned and we'll look for your support. And I thank you, my, again, my campaign team, my family, and all of you for coming tonight. And again, tonight, it's just an official date that we want to kick off and to announce to the Ramsey County, uh, and our people in Ramsey County that we are launching the campaign for uh, helping Tianling to become the next county commissioner in District 7. So again, I thank you so much for coming and feel free, we have lots of food, lots of appetizers left, and the night is still young, so, and I think the owner of the banquet here allowed us to karaoke too, so feel free to stay, we can have a lot of fun. So again, thank you to, um, my campaign team, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the people that has supported us this far, so. Two of the first people that pledged money without, I'm asking, they saw me and they just say, "You got my vote, I want to support you and I want to give you something right now." And that goes to my good Dong Ying Wang in Alaska, uh, or people know as La Cross. So we were down there for a family meeting, so he just pulled me aside, he said, "Yilong, I'm glad that you are running for commissioner, I want to give you something now, okay?" So he's the first one, I mean, his wife, Hong Mong Goshi Stor in Alaska, Wisconsin. And then just this past weekend, a relative from Eau Claire. I didn't know him, but he said he know me well, so he just came and shook my hand, gave me a hug and said, "I heard you running, I got nothing on me but twenty dollars, so I give you twenty dollars." So I thank you to Dong Ying and Alan Xiong from Eau Claire. And then, uh, today, you see the decorations and the preparation by this team here and Mai Xiong Ta of Mai, on Mai Flower and Gift and St. Paul for her centerpiece, the flower. Uh, and Lu Cheng Xiong from Golden Harvest for providing all the fruit, uh, we are eating tonight. And obviously, Yalou Zhong Zhen and the, uh, the Fang family and the Muah family of Unison Banquet and Restaurant for giving us this space and provided all the service and all the food for us tonight. And then Gong Xi Xiang Mung, Minnesota radio. And, uh, again, my wife Hong, my daughter Ki, Daye, my son Ti, and my baby Chia for giving me this opportunity to stand in front of you guys. So, uh, I guess if, uh, for the elder, I probably just gonna close a little bit in Mong, then I will shut up and then we all could talk more. Uh, I'd say that I call be too. They get冲给搞 但是呢你都包的我给海螺还赌你都包的我图差我给那女的到那个那女的要家庭老母老包还给被蒙要到给我来我你也自己知道一类有给新也到给蒙也去蒙路中了的也不到呃 county commissioner 到地区呢国家被蒙叫家们是都还给真万只有真意思给是自己的摸着山明山来搞但是我讲到被给你找对被我们我包头我们谁是谁到爸被我们是谁是到我们也要送人到被给到 county commissioner 我们给到我们是我们给我们是谁我们是谁到我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是我们是